So it's six o'clock, I'd like to open the meeting. Are there any adjustments to the agenda at all? Anybody have anything? None? Any public comment? Okay, then I would make a motion that we approve the bills to the town.
I'll say it.
All in favor?
Alright.
And then I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes from the last slipboard meeting on April 25th, 2019.
It's actually true.
All in favor?
Alright.
Okay. So next, I'd like to make a motion that we enter into executive session citing Juan VSA Section 313A3 for personnel discussion.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Alright.
And to invite Greg Parker as to... Good, so we're gonna go into executive session and... So one of the things I wanted us to discuss is just, I know Greg has a list of summer projects and I thought it would be good for him to share that with us. We could... Louise, are you okay with just hearing that out and then we'll get on to the...
No, no, that's fine.
Okay. So I know, Greg, I know we have fixed one culvert on County Road and I know you have plans to work your way down.
Right.
On Greenwood Lake, but...
We did another one today.
Yeah.
Yeah, we had to, obviously had to replace that culvert. One didn't wash today, the other one didn't wash away. Stuck a bigger one in there.
So you're gonna focus on County Road?
The excavators there, yeah. Down through. We're going back to Steve's. There's a culvert there to Steve's on Willeroe, the first one that needs to be replaced.
Yeah. Steve for half an hour.
So we're in the middle. Gonna go both ways, actually.
Mm-hmm.
So we're just gonna start from there and...
Using your subs for that as well for hauling material, back and forth, whatever.
A lot of ditching and stuff. Everything comes out, then you put new in.
You've got the two subs. Is there times when you need more time with them to get more stuff done? Because I'm certainly agreeable if you need more hours to have both the subs on or have them both work longer if it's stuff that you need doing, like cleaning brush out of, stuff like that that's important to do.
And it never ends.
But...
You know, it wouldn't end.
No, but we could, but that's really looking for some direction. If you say, "Well, we could really use some hours along this road to pick stuff out of the ditches so Greg could grade the ditches out."
Right.
Well, that's what I'm agreeable to. I think that needs to happen so that it helps.
Yeah, if you could have those two guys just go around with the truck.
You're only interested 30 hours with them anyway, so...
Right, but if you need them both for 30 hours a week, that's what I'm saying, if that's what you need.
Yeah, I think we're saying, you know, if there are projects where you could use both of them.
Yeah.
Feel free to...
To get you caught up and to get stuff done that needs doing. That's, but you didn't get to cover that, but that's what I believe.
Right.
If you need more time, then I think you should have it.
I have the slipboards.
That's pretty much always there.
I know there's a limit to it, but let us know where you can best use it.
Right. Randy will let us know for...
Till we run out of money, right, Randy?
Yeah.
If the subs are gonna help you.
Just for instance, we've got till July 1st to get another, I don't know, six or seven yards of sand left over from last year that we're gonna have in there.
Right, so that's what...
For the new budget.
Right, that's my point, if you've got stuff...
That's just a, for instance, which, you know, rainy days you can do that and we had to share those.
Yeah.
But that's gonna stop.
Yeah.
You know, that's just one example.
Yep.
So I guess just...
But yeah, because we are, this is the late spring, we're probably behind, you guys are probably behind, so if you need those extra guys' hours in, I think we probably would all agree to it.
I've got a week of vacation to use before July. Greg's going on vacation, I think, for two weeks or something.
He's saying around the 4th of July, he's gone for two weeks.
Yeah, so if you can make use of the subs, make use of them.
Right, that's what I would say.
I mean, that would be the optimum time, obviously, as well one or the other of us are gone.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I know one other project, probably the grants and aid for the municipal roads, general permit, we're kind of focusing on, there's three segments on Valley Lake Road, the last steep section before you get down to Kirkland. Greg and I have been kind of looking at that road inventory, which I haven't had much time to, I was supposed to have a five-year plan to the Regional Planning Commission by the end of April and it's not there yet, but too much school issue stuff.
Yeah.
But that's sort of behind us now.
That's...
So that's a plan to try to work on those three segments of road.
That road that dug, you know, that bank, it never really...
Held down around Kirkland.
Never really drilled, right.
Yeah.
So I'd like to do it, just like they did these still, armor the whole thing right down through.
Yeah, they was that clout, that canvas that overlapped second.
Looks like they did something to it, but didn't stay.
It didn't stay, it didn't grow, didn't stay.
Didn't grow.
And then was...
I think if we armor it the same way with that big stone, it...
And then the spring, that ditch basically there was full of snow and ice, so the, you know, the ditch really didn't work during that heavy rain that we had.
Yeah, so we're thinking about a grant for that.
Okay.
Yep. Yeah, we should be able to work on, use the grant for that.
That be the, from the sharp corner down or just around?
Even around the corner.
Just around it.
Yeah, we've done above the sharp corner.
Yeah, all the way down.
Yeah, that was a couple, couple years ago. Or was it last summer?
Last summer.
No, it was summer before, two summers ago.
Two summers ago.
Yeah, we did five straight over in last summer. So that's kind of in the way to work on that with the grant program. Any other summer projects that you, I mean, part of the thing of making a plan is that you gotta deal with the things that are unplanned too.
You can't really make a big plan, but that's where we're starting anyways, is the County Road down through the falls, there's a couple culverts on that road.
I got two that are popping up.
There's two on the corner, you know...
And that, the ledges, they're looking at a couple of the...
The one where the hole was, that one's gonna go.
It's like they're crushed or something.
The collars usually break and...
Oh, you're saying the water, why, okay.
Stuff goes down in between.
Got it.
I know another thing that's kind of in the works is to have Shawna Clifford and I think it's Jaren Borg is his name, the trans hydrologist, come and look at some of the bigger, older metal culverts that we have. You know, the Bailey Bridge Road is one where the culvert's looking pretty rusty and so they're gonna come and spend however long it takes and look, looking at some of the older culverts, maybe some of the other metal culverts in the village, just kind of eyeball them for us and give us a sense of, you know, what to think about down the road here, so...
Oh, another thing I saw is that big one you had to flood over by the waterfall on Greenwood. There's a great big log jammed in there. When you go by there, you may want to pull that out of there. Where I washed the creek down the road and over the bank at Greenwood Lake, that culvert, if you look in the entrance end, there's a great big log jammed in there.
Yeah, we'll work on it. I heard it show you something.
Let's go take a machine or something to get it there.
What we found today.
Uh-huh. You got a photograph of it?
No, we'll go over and look at it.
Okay.
You're not gonna believe this one either. That brook doesn't even run at all in the summer.
No, it doesn't, it was dry last Friday, it's got water in it.
All those camps and comes right down.
Is that where the water goes?
Yeah.
I was wondering, there was no water in it last Friday, but there's water in it today.
It goes into the ledge, maybe 50 feet before the road and then...
There's a two-foot brook up there.
Yeah, and it goes, it disappears, yeah, it disappears.
And then it comes out in the ledge.
Yeah, it does, I've seen it.
Comes out in the ledge all along that, those sardine camps.
Yeah, because last Friday it wasn't running at all.
I'm sure where that water went.
You're right, there was a two-foot wide brook running and disappeared.
Went under a log and then just...
Disappeared.
Yeah, if you walk along the shore, you can see it running into those...
Okay.
One of the camp owners showed us that last summer.
Well, the guy, the first camp right there.
Yeah.
First camp right by there, yeah. Yeah, 'cause I saw that one time, I wondered where...
I had to talk to him, I had to go across his property to bail that.
Yeah.
So it came, because it washes out in the lake, you can't get out in there. But that's the only time it ever runs, is the spring.
Yeah. Yeah, that's weird.
You ever run up on top of there? See what's up there? Is there a pond up there?
It's all runoff, it just comes from a bunch of figures, yeah. There's no big pond.
No, yeah, there's the falls and then it's just a brook.
I just made that new brook, you know, right by Morse's driveway or just down from there, remember? That's all new, that's within the last two years, that brook disappeared.
Huh.
Remember where it's washing out there?
Pulling that ledge.
That's new, that didn't do that five years ago. I don't know where that came from.
That's a, I don't know what we're gonna do there.
That's new, you've seen it, just like...
No, no.
I've been watching two years, like, I don't know where that went.
There's no place to put it.
That's on the backside of the lake?
Yeah, Downford Mike House, it just started that, started running about two years ago and hasn't stopped.
It has to run all the way from there to the culvert. It's like 700 feet.
Wow.
There's no place to...
That's down near your place.
Right, where Stephen Morse used to chuck batch in his old place.
You can't bend it across the Lord's Way because there's no place for it to go.
Yeah.
Oh, I don't know.
I don't even know where the water came from. Never used to run.
There's hardly enough pits there.
Could be a spring or something, but...
Yeah, it's just poured out of that ledge everywhere. And then it freezes and moves more of it out.
Right, yeah. Shall we move on to Eric's Cove Road or is there any other projects that you're thinking of that you want to share?
Well, there's a lot of them. I mean, there's a lot of stuff that needs to be done.
Yeah.
Like I said, I mean, right now it's concentrating on the spring stuff and being moved up enough so we can start all that other.
So you sent us an email about two weeks, a month ago, while ago?
Seven days.
Seven days?
So it's just seen.
Okay, seems like it was before our last slipboard meeting.
No.
No, it was between.
Okay, alright. And you're aware that this issue has come up in the past?
I am.
Yeah. I just drove down it before our meeting just to look at the road, you know, there it's... And you know, the issue, and I'm speaking, you know, other slipboard members, you know, I'm speaking mostly for myself and from my memory of when this came up a few years ago is that, you know, it's a private road and I know that the road crew in the past did at least do a yearly pass on it and I'm not saying that the town can't do that or help in some way, but what we do when we do that is we kind of open a can of worms and that there are a lot of, especially with the lakes and the different camps, there are a lot of private roads. So, you know, you help one area with private road and then you start, other people start saying, "Well, hey, you know, you helped them, how come you aren't gonna help our road?" And, you know, we've, we've had this discussion about the private roads and the camps and you guys do pay taxes and, you know, you don't get much in return for the money that you give the town.
Thanks, yeah. Well, personally, I've got no problem helping out a little bit, because we do it for East Long Pond.
Right.
Yeah, we've done...
Well, that's a class four road.
Nichols Pond Road.
Yeah, that's a class four road too.
We've done some other little ones for the camps.
So I know years ago...
A pass through, a little bit of gravel for me, it's, we obviously can't get out past the lake.
Right, we can't get the folks on the road crew that do the rest of the road, we maintain that, that's where it really gets smaller, I don't know if our...
I drove to where...
Right, where the gate used to be.
Yeah, yeah. When we do the rest and we have a couple different folks on the road that have bucket loaders and what have you and can dig down and we regrade it and we drop stuff where we can, sometimes people donate some, but from really the Rogers camps out is where it's really wide, where your machinery can actually get in and do the grading, that's where the worst part is.
Yeah.
We've got the rest of it, I'm gonna say, under control and we try to get donations from taxpayers and, you know, on the road, residents. Their complaint to me, because I do the winter road, is that, you know, it's really bad and very deep and you drove it today, so you saw that. There's not a lot that we can do because our machinery just really can't handle what needs to be done, it needs to be graded. And once it's graded, then we'll prob, you know, like we always do, we always maintain it and keep it up.
Does it need more material though to be graded? Is there enough there to live without it?
Yeah.
It needs material.
Yeah.
How much material does it need?
Enough to get out of a burn.
Yeah, so to do the section three loads?
Through off the rocks and all that stuff.
Yeah, three loads, four loads.
The next thing is where you're gonna turn around?
There is a spot, I think, to turn around. We couldn't go as far as you mentioned in your email to where Jennifer Harman used to live.
Right, that's, the road is the what?
That's where, that's where...
The right width, till there. After that, all beds are off, but you can turn around and that's where all the large trucks turn around.
You know, Greg would be the final judge of this, but I think there is a spot where there's like a pull-off, it might be somebody's driveway, I think the grader would probably be a bit of turning and then moving forward, but I have never driven a grader, so I don't know. But I think there is a spot there where it could turn around, but, I mean, that would be up to the road crew to decide that, whether they could have, that's the big issue and obviously they must have at one point in time turned around somewhere.
They used to do the little part, kind of amazing, because for those of us who were living there, you know, they always gave us a schedule, they were gonna be in by 7:00, 7:30 and we'd leave and get out of everybody's way that was going to work. So that was what, two and a half, three years ago, we would always be getting out of the way. Then they stopped doing the smaller piece and when they stopped, and I, we can understand this, it's just the width of the grader. I mean, there's really no room.
It's not as wide as the grader, grader's 14-deep wide.
Right, that's what I mean, as soon as you get to, you know, the Harman or the Rogers camps, you can't get by. You can't get by, so that's why we were...
Obviously, melt crown.
Right.
Yeah.
You ever thought about hiring a small grader, you know, put it in our budget for the class four road maintenance?
For a pri, well, it's not an issue.
What's the guy's name down there, McAllister, is it him that has the little grader?
Gary Bellman still has a grader?
Hmm, yeah, but he wouldn't...
I mean, if the Lake Association wants to hire somebody with a smaller grader, that's fine, but I don't know, you know, I don't think we're gonna hire, this is my opinion, I don't think we should be hiring someone to fix a private road.
Right.
But pair of them.
So what used to happen in the 90s, Rip used to do some of these roads, but they billed the, his hourly rate.
There's been no material.
No, no, I get that, I was just going back where, where this came from, you know, because I know we used to hire him to do a couple of big driveways and what he did is they billed you his hourly rate, didn't bill for the machine. My problem is if you guys are strapped, it would have to be a weekend or evening, I don't know, that's...
I mean, probably until the, all the roads are done.
All the, yeah. Pay off, you know.
Yeah, that would be totally up to Greg.
I mean, it'd have to be something that doesn't come on my gravel budget either, you know, because I'm gonna use it all.
Is there a cost for the material that maybe we could cover?
Well, we would not, we would charge you what we would pay, we wouldn't be making a profit on it and if you were willing to pay the road crew the time, we could, we could not charge you the rate for the equipment, I suppose.
Okay, yeah. And I think that's what my road guy said is, "We paid for the time." Many years we've paid for the time, so...
It is cheaper to pay us probably than to hire a private contractor.
We hired a private contractor to bring in a little bit of fill last year and it, you know, took the budget, but the budget's not very big, so...
Put a little young guys on it, tell them that.
That's the dilemma is, you know...
Yeah, that's true, that'd be a little bit light.
Yeah, buddy, see what I'm saying? Be a train.
Not to go by, anyway.
We didn't know if we'd get an answer, but we're kind of in a pickle because we've learned that we really can't do that piece, we can't dig down deep enough. It's very well packed and as Greg says, it needs more material on that section of the road, so there's not a lot we were able to do. We're able to figure out the rest, one of our culverts had water compromise the top of it and that got all messed up here in the last three weeks, so we filled that, took care of that. But yeah, the rest, that large part of the road is a hard spot. Have you been out there to think that your, your machinery can get through still, up until there?
I went out, oh, I don't, probably not quite a quarter of a mile.
Yeah, it's not quite a quarter.
The last place I saw where you could turn around, or I thought you could turn around, was on the corner.
Yes.
Right.
Is that the spot you're thinking of?
Yeah, pretty much, because you really...
So it's only, I don't think it was a quarter of a mile.
No, it's not.
Three...
It's not even a three.
300 yard, maybe.
I should have, I didn't think to call them.
I have a measuring bill if you want to.
It doesn't really matter, it was...
It is what it is, yeah.
Yeah.
But it's that beginning that's very, very hard packed and which is...
Four, five loads, maybe.
And...
What do you figure out load costs, the town? Do you need a deer?
We just saw a bill's been...
Yeah. There in the pile of bills, it's...
We could figure that out and...
We have a calculator.
Tell them, Pam, is it three bucks a yard?
Would you have to go in and scarefy it and then...
No, it's 14 and a quarter.
14 and a quarter.
Would you have to go in and rip it up first to break those runs?
The truck, the 10-wheelers hold, what, 14 yards?
Yeah.
So four truck loads, if I had a calculator, I could, but my head is, you don't want to watch me do the...
Do your own math.
Does that seem like something that, that the road crew could get to eventually?
Probably.
Or a weekend Saturday or something.
You folks didn't come...
Probably would be on a weekend, because we need to get the material.
Right, and I don't think you came until either June or July, I don't want to use the word July, but we're gonna scare them, okay, we're, you know...
Yeah, they just don't want to pull them off.
No, 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 and we're all, everybody's behind, that's the issue, you know, and some of our folks that have some of their heavy machinery haven't, weren't back, so we were saying, "Well, let's see if we can get the beginning of that road maintained." Scott didn't tell me, you're talking about Scott McCullough that lives on the corner of our road?
Yeah, well...
Or McAllister.
Then you even talked about Scott, yeah.
This is Willie's.
McAllister, yeah.
Does he have a little grader?
Well, I'm gonna chat with him.
Ask him if he's got one? He's right there, so that's...
So if we were to bring gravel down there and just dump it and if Scott McCullough did have a small grader or something?
I don't, yeah, I don't know what he has there, he's busy all the time, but I would have to ask. See, I think he would have already offered to do some of the grading.
Because it's his road.
Well, yeah, I mean, you know, he uses his own driveway, but he does use the road quite a bit in the summer for his events. Our dilemma is we can't do justice with any grading, we don't have anything to grade it. And, you know, when you guys came, then it would be quite nice.
You didn't even notice, you see any foam lines or any of that, you didn't notice?
I didn't notice any, like, hanging close to the road.
Or big ones or...
Pass that.
No, I didn't. It really doesn't, once you get, I think you're kind of getting into the trees when you get to that corner that we're going to think enough for turning around, it's pretty open.
I'd have to look again.
Yeah, it's pretty, in my...
You know, make its tailgate, it's pretty close.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so if you want to send me an email of what you think it would cost, then we can, you know, talk with them about it. I just think we have to do something about the beginning of the road and they're asking us if any of the guys that maintain the rest can do anything and I spoke to them. The bucket loader that they have isn't equipped to do what it needs to do.
Well, I can, I can figure out the gravel part.
Yeah, the bill should be right in there, I'd use that for the half if I didn't, Michael, because it would stay around long.
Right. And then Greg can give me a, you know, ballpark figure of hours and...
If you can even get the grader in there to do it to start with, because it is pretty wide.
I'll have to look again, we can get in there.
It's a pretty good road until you, until you start getting to the camps.
You're not able to do anything if there's no material, number one, and then you can't crown it or anything.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, you won't be able to crown it.
You've gotta, you've gotta pitch it one way.
My guess is it probably won't be until sometime in June if you're looking.
Smaller machine, you could crown it and, you know, be done.
Yeah, we have hard enough time in the winter, we're all talking about finding somebody who has a large snow blower.
Yeah, that'd be nice.
Need the gravel.
Have you got a snow blower?
If it's soft, I, yeah, I used one this winter, I put a lot of my driveway in the lawn, I had to put back.
Well, that's our...
Till it freezes.
That's our problem is, I don't really think you can live on the lakes, not on our road anyway.
And that's what's happening.
Not beyond that.
We don't plow it all, mind you, but we plow probably close to a mile.
If we go way out...
We're right in the middle on that back, on the waterside.
Bunch of ambulance calls down there, way down to the far corner.
And once you drive around that far corner and go to the narrow, it's probably a mile and a half.
People that live there all the way to that...
Yeah, yeah, we have one person that's live, that lives over there and then the rest of us live where the camps start and, you know...
Yeah, the more snow there is, the harder and harder it is to move it.
Yeah, we, you know, you pay a bucket loader to come and move it all and you can't like, it's very difficult to move, you can't move it towards the water.
Yeah, yeah.
There's just really very little room and so clearly what should happen is the road should probably truncate right there after the first two camps. You can get in and out very easily at the beginning and then after that, it's very, very difficult.
Yeah.
And, you know, we've had fire and rescue and everyone gets in and it's not a big deal, but boy, past that, there's a curve, a second curve and then...
Yeah, way in is bad.
Yeah, you'd be pushing it to the end.
Get our equipment way down to the far end.
No, not at all. I think that's very reasonable, if that's something that you guys can figure out and I can be back with them and.
I'll try to send you, this week I will send.
You could give us a message of how long you think it would take to grade it.
It won't take long if we can.
Yeah, it was bringing in the stuff that was the hard time before as well, so that would be very helpful.
If we're doing, doing that, at some point you wanna make sure you tell everybody, don't just keep traveling two lanes. Set over, pack, pack the whole road down.
The windy people do that.
Stay in the center.
Not so much in the summer.
That's a problem though, you know, when it comes to road maintenance, because you're not gonna be able to put gravel on it.
Yes, yes, absolutely.
So the water's gonna lay in those trenches and it's gonna cause you problems in the future.
Yes, and, and we've had that since, we haven't been able to maintain that beginning part. That's kind of how this has probably all started and gotten much worse, cause once you folks stopped, you know, grading it really well, that's when I went to hell after that. We've had someone come in on one side of the road and do some cutting, and so it's sort of, I don't, I would say to you, let the sun in, dries better, resumes, you know.
Makes the road harder.
Yeah, makes it much, much better, and that was very helpful, wasn't their intent, I'm sure, but, um, it, it worked out really well for us. And so we've tried to, you know, keep that maintained and cut stuff back to let the sun in, cause that's really how it hardens up for us.
Yeah.
So that's, that's very reasonable, if you can see what can work, and we didn't expect it to be for quite a while, cause can't do anything at the moment.
Yeah.
Same where I'm at anyway, isn't just the material, you know.
Yes, I'm sure, we pay to have material brought in at other places, so, yeah. Yes, it's.
Track away and blow away and, you know, once you're starting to bring up rocks and stuff against you, you're fighting yourself.
Okay?
Good, thank you very much. I'll let you get on to the, that's stimulating as it is. Thank you.
Fun that you would.
Thank you.
So, um, I wanted to share with you some more information about this Kingsbury Branch Stormwater Master Plan and the survey that was done. Um, we, it looks like we are getting the grant, um, to do the design work this summer, so, um.
Do you have electronic copies of these you've forward?
Uh, this is some paper copy stuff that was given to me at the last meeting I went to, but I think. Let me find out if, I don't know if I have it or not, to be honest with you. I did forward, um, I think this is probably, um, I forwarded to both of you the, um, the last thing that came from Pam to Andrea from the Regional Planning Commission announcing, where she had the email about the grant, and then there were those three, three different links. One of the links has like thirty to forty files of different information that they've gathered, and this is probably in there. But this was, um, this you have seen, um, these were those sheets that came up, um, in the beginning. And you may not have seen them, I know Brian saw them at one point and was working on this. But these are, these are the kind of the plans for the sites in the village. So there's the school, there is the fire station, fire department annex building. And then this is the, um, between the fire station and the post office. And this is over on Church Street, which I'm just gonna set aside, cause that's not really, we are gonna get to that uh, very soon, I don't think, hopefully sometime down the road, but these are the three that kind of trying to focus on. And this is, this is why I'm, you know, also kind of wanting to wait on the paving, because all three of these involve, um, well, these, these two do not actually, this is the, uh, school parking lot. And the plan there is to put in, um, kind of like a swamp catch basin.
Parking lot sloped that way.
Sloped that way, and there'll be a couple of tiers, so, and it would also be taking water coming down from Valley Lake Road. There'd be a culvert coming through into it, so there'd be one level, um, and then that would run into a lower level, which would be the swamp. And then anything running over that would run down through a culvert across and into this catch basin on the other, you know, kind of right behind, um, the annex building. At least that was my initial thought, that it was gonna be behind the annex building. And now it looks like they might be thinking, you know, right where that drive is, beside the foot show. So I need to clarify that, but, so this would be, this is kind of what this would look like. Little kind of rocky, stony, marshy looking gravel wetland areas. It's, it's a, basically a catch basin to catch water. Water, some of the water would, um, filtrate into the soil. The excess in a heavy flow would spill over and run down into a special catch basin. This is kind of a new state of the art thing that seems to be happening, um, as opposed to the big stone pools that, that we, you know, we have a few of those in the village now also, but, so this would, um, catch the, the runoff and the erosion, um, and then, I'm not quite exactly sure how it works, but there's a series of loops and pipes in there, so the water is able to run out, but the, the gravel and silt and everything else, um, uh, filters out, kind of falls out in these basins.
How do you deal with it once it fills up with silt?
You have to pump it out. Yeah, so, um, so somebody, and the, these are just starting to happen around the state. Some entrepreneur will hopefully, has already started a business with a special, it's basically like, uh, sometimes in the cities you see the manhole cover kind of sewer pump out things. That's what's gonna, that's what'll have to happen, or whether, and it's hard to say how often that'll happen. Hopefully not ten times a year, but, um, and then the, so the water, again, would filtrate out into the soil. And, uh, and I don't think there's any kind of overflow that would eventually go into the Kingsbury Branch.
Back in here, the water table, you dig down two or three feet, you're right in the water table.
Yeah, yeah, so this, this, this type of catch basin is also proposed for, between the post office and the fire station, pretty much right where I think on the southern side of that swale that leads water down into the, that goes into the.
Leach field and septic systems over there somewhere too.
Is it, okay.
Cause we have a septic here and then theirs is out in here.
Okay, so I think where they're proposing, I think they, they should have done their research to know where those leach fields are. I can't imagine that they didn't, but the proposal is to put it kind of right where it's paved now, kind of in the park, that parking area. And these are, these are subsurface, so once they're in, um, you know, you, there's like a manhole cover, that's basically all there is that you would see, like, like in a city or something. So these two, these two are covered in the design, um, grant that we have received. This one is not.
So the grant is for the design of this right now?
Yeah, the full, uh, professional design, yeah, that's what the grant's for. And then, of course, we would use that design to go for a grant next, so the actual implementation of the work would probably happen next summer. Best case scenario, I mean, that's my, that's my hope, and I'm hoping that we could also, um, this would, we could fund this through a Better Roads grant, um, which, uh, those grants don't get submitted until the fall, so whether, um, you know, that design could happen early next summer, um, and then, um, be implemented later in the summer, um, I don't know. That's, this, this one is a more, a big question mark, right, the one about the timeframe for doing it. And these, you know, I think it is true, they're, they are pretty much off the Valley Lake Road. So, you know, if we wanted to pave that part of Valley Lake Road, um, this summer, I don't see why we couldn't. The only thing I worry about is that if there's heavy equipment, like an excavator coming in, cause they're gonna have to dig a pretty good sized pit to do this.
Yeah.
What would that do?
They're gonna have to change all the grades here, that's really.
Yeah, yeah, that swale would probably disappear. Um, what do they say in the best management practice for this?
I got question marks about those filter bits.
Yeah.
Cause they're just gonna fill up with the, cause one of the problems I can see is right now, we're washing all the sediment off this. And that would have to change, we couldn't do it anymore, you wouldn't wanna wash that all in, they'd have to go back to sweeping that parking lot.
Yep.
Like we did fifteen, twenty years ago, cause of the sand and all that that fills up over the winter, so that's an additional expense you're gonna have to.
A lot of sand.
To look at, cause I wouldn't wanna, you wouldn't wanna just wash it in that on purpose.
Right, yeah, yeah.
Cause now it just goes in the brook, but apparently don't want that to happen.
Yeah, I mean, if you look, have you looked behind the building, corner now, the way?
Yeah, yeah, we're gonna have a cleanup day, and that tree's gotta come down, and we're gonna clean all that up.
Yeah, there's quite a bit that eroded there from, from just the melting, um, yeah, so that's, yeah, that's something that they probably aren't aware of, um, when they designed this.
Cause you'd have to go back to sweeping, like they, one point they hired a street sweeper, another point the road crew was sweeping it by hand, and then they, you had the little pushy thing they used to sweep with, I remember years ago. And then we went back to washing it again, which works the best, but the problem is it, you definitely wouldn't wanna wash that stuff into the filter bit.
Yeah. Okay, something else, I mean, I don't think.
Just something to think about, there was a lot of material, but it was probably two big buckets of, and they brought the loader over, uh, sand and whatnot.
Sand, yeah.
That had been collected in there.
Okay, I'll let them know that and see that they.
Yeah, cause I, I can hear that, as soon as you mentioned it, I was like, well, that's gonna be a problem, cause like, now that you're salting it, there's a lot less on there than there used to be, but there's still quite a bit.
Still quite a bit, yeah. All right.
Well, does she sand?
Well, sometimes.
I don't know if she ever did.
They used to, yeah, somebody sanded, cause there was a ton of sand here, uh, here, and then all down through here was all sand. Where you guys were salting, there wasn't only whatever cars were on.
Yeah, so you, you guys salted.
Right, but that's reduced it a lot, but there was still a lot.
Yeah, I guess one thing that we could request from the post office is if they salt that instead of sanding it, once, you know, once this thing.
Yeah, cause once it's happened, this is all gonna have to be repaved.
Yeah, yeah, and, uh, the woman from the Regional Planning Commission told me that it would be better to, if you have, hey, like with the V-Trans grant or any of the grants for the implementing, if there's pavement there that has to be removed in order to put these in, then the grant will pay for the repaving. If there's no pavement.
So they would pay for part of it, cause basically if you're gonna redo that, that would have to be dug up all the way back to here to re-get that slope out of there.
Yeah, most of the grants are eighty percent, um.
Cause that swale, that swale right now is right here, there's a dip in front of the building, that's all would have to come out.
Yep, yeah.
If you wanted it to drain to your nose, it would be a revamp of the whole parking lot. So that segues into our, do we pave the town park, we're gonna have to do something with the town parking lot this year, cause it's where we patched that hole with the stay mat that we had, when we were there cleaning it up, the loader was there, we put some of that stay mat, we scraped up in there and it's holding, but next to it's all breaking out, cause it's just so busted up.
And there's a pretty good break.
Yeah, there's, it's breaking all the way across there.
Yeah, I mean, we could try to keep it patched, um, you know, I wish I had a better sense of the timeline on this, but, um, hopefully I will, maybe in another few meetings down the road.
Again, I don't have an issue with Wix, we have issues, we may be renovating this building, and I hate to, I'm torn, you know what I'm saying? It's like, we wanna screw with the parking lot before we do that.
Right, yeah.
But I don't know what to do with the, with the holes.
Right, well, we'll, obviously we'll try, we'll get to fix those somehow.
You don't feel like patching pavement all summer, right?
No, it's really.
I mean, one thing.
Trying to avoid that.
Yeah. One thing Greg mentioned is that, you know, that first patch was cold patch, and we could try.
Hot patch.
Hot patch and see how that, or maybe just.
You could go get a truck loader, sew that hot pavement, right? We'd have to have a roller or something. I don't think about it.
I'd have to check into it, because we don't want pavement in our bodies, cause they got chains in it.
So.
Or we could have someone bring, have someone do it, that would be my recommendation, is if we, even if you've paved somebody.
Might be able to do it in a five fifty, if it's right.
Can't, we could, you know, could we hire somebody to come and just match those holes?
Yeah, yeah.
You know, cut the edges and dig it down and hatch them. Maybe that's what we should do this year. That might make, make the most sense, then you don't have to figure that out.
That does sound like a good.
You don't have a roller either, right? Yeah.
Then we can use money from our paving.
Slap legs on his shoes, he can dance.
So when the time comes, we do have enough money in our paving fund to do this.
Okay.
This project.
That would be the whole, cause you're basically, you do this apron all the way across here.
Yeah.
Use this, all of this would have to be done. The right of way out here is breaking up, but that's in the state right of way.
Right, yeah, that's their, that's, that's their problem.
But where we drilled holes from the thing here years ago, that's breaking up. So maybe one of us should contact a company to see what it would cost to just patch those holes.
Yeah, get, get on, get on the work list, yeah. Yeah, do you know of some companies that we could contact?
Just small, big, yeah, just small.
Okay.
I don't mind chasing that.
Okay, go ahead, yeah, why not, yeah, please do that.
Yeah, even that all speed.
Yeah, they do little jobs, cause they would have the right equipment, again, this is one of those things, if you don't have the right equipment, it can be a horrible job, if you have the right equipment.
So let, yeah, so let's try to do a patch job and.
Okay.
And.
I'll have to try to get some pricing before the next one, maybe. Better make it myself.
So, yeah, so that's pretty much, I just wanted to give you guys a better sense of what's gonna be happening eventually, hopefully. And you know, the, you know, my, my feeling is, is that this is stuff that's being imposed on us by the state. So, um, until they help us pay for it, and, and, and until they basically.
Yeah, we're not gonna do it.
We're not gonna do it unless, unless we get, um, financial help to do it.
I know at some point when we're over here, we gotta dig this some more, because it filled back in, but we can do that with somebody when you're over there.
We can keep on scraping that down, and you know, when, when they come to do the design this summer, I want, you know, I don't want them just to focus on this and that, I want them to solve the.
All of this, yeah.
So hopefully the.
Cause I, when they do pave this, I want them to pave all this, two and all, we'll figure out how we're gonna pay for our parking lot, but it makes the sense to do that.
Yeah.
Cause it'll make that winter maintenance easier, you could salt that instead of, cause it builds up so thick with ice. Last year, you got to where the truck was dragging on the way out the door, a ten foot door.
Last year was an acceptable.
All year, it was awful.
Crazy.
And I could try to find, I'm pretty sure in one of those files, um, that this is, that, um, this information that I was given, you know, a month or so ago is there.
These things scare me, cause I'm just afraid they're gonna fill up with.
Right.
Salt, you'll be there, not salt, but sand and silt, and you'll be digging them up in five years.
Or less.
Or less, yeah.
Well, here, this one by the annex, um, that one should be pretty good, because in theory, um, this system and, you know.
We should have gotten rid of a lot of it.
We should have gotten rid of a lot of it up there.
Cause this won't be a cheap project, regrading that whole parking lot.
Yeah.
And digging this thing.
Yeah.
And that's a hill and a valley.
It's a hill, yeah, it's a bank, yeah, definitely a steep.
It's progressively steeper.
Yeah, definitely drops right off.
They're talking about making it a catch pond.
Yeah, pretty much at the base of the hill though.
Have a pipe that lets it.
Yeah, they, they, they wouldn't be cutting away that bank, or if you, if you go there by the parking lot, there is kind of a wet, rocky area at the, at the bottom of that, that steep drop off. And that's where they're thinking of putting that. And then there would be a kind of a trench, you know, grass trench through the.
Try to make all this water go here, try to make this water go here before it runs down.
Before it runs down there, so there's, I mean, that obviously there's gonna be some, and that, that is the unknown, how, you know, how.
Cause they're so new, I just wonder if you're gonna give it any big.
Well, there, I'm sure, I think there are some in and other places, and it would be interesting to.
The question is, is it enough paint there, or is it, is this one, and all dirt, I'm soaking it.
Steal it.
See what it looks like.
Yeah.
It looks like a crazy.
Yeah, like those sewer ones, that little stuff comes in and goes down the sides.
Yeah. I will ask.
High, ask real high volume, this, this would get a lot of, lot of silt in it every year.
Yeah, I will ask.
This would get less.
Pam to Andrea if she knows of some of these that are in sight, and we can.
Cause sometimes I've seen that design stuff that they look at, and oh, whoa, yeah, sorry, you gotta put another one in.
Looks good on paper.
Dirt out here, it's not all paved much.
Right, yeah, yeah.
The new one costs twice as much as the other one.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so.
Looks like, kinda like your beaver bathroom, you know.
Sort of, yeah, maybe it could be, come up with a new beaver solution. That would really fool them. For a couple of weeks anyway. Okay, and, um, you know, so the quotes on the paving, um, for the Valley Lake Road section, that was about twenty-one thousand dollars and.
To pave from the corner all the way up to the school.
To the school, yeah, and then the quote for what I'll call the Village Street, you know.
Village Square is what it's called.
Village Square, okay, for the Village Square is about nineteen thousand, so it'd be about, and that's all on our dime, cause, um.
Except what they dig up for the project.
Right, that little bit, we could, we could get reimbursed for.
As much as possible.
Yeah, yeah.
So again, I think if, if, we think that, I think we need to try and do it next summer if possible.
Yeah, that's my goal too.
It doesn't make a lot of sense to spend a lot of money patching and then have it break up and do it again next year, but we should patch it.
That's the goal that I have too, and I, I hope that.
So we should, I'll hit, well, we're patching it, I guess, cause again, morphing into the, if the firehouse projects happen, it would make sense to wait too.
Yeah, okay. So that's pretty much it on the, for the town highway report. We can move on to the town treasure, and we're actually.
We had a schedule.
Well, that's five minutes slow, so we're ten minutes behind. And you don't need to stay any longer.
If you really want to.
I'm out of here.
Thank you, thank you for having me, Greg.
See you later.
Yeah.
Everybody, everybody.
What are those things they're just talking about underground, right?
I don't know what they're called, it's like a leach field for, for runoff.
A leach.
Cause they don't want the silty runoff going into the brook and into the watershed, so somehow it's supposed to collect it all.
But it's like a pipe, right?
Yeah, you can show them here. It looks like a leach field, but my concern is if we fill it up with sand.
Is it like what they did at the Dollar General, like in Hardwick?
Well, most of those have sediment ponds, that, then there's a pipe and the water fills up a little bit, it'll run in, but the rest of it settles out. But this is, you look, it's a leach field underground, but somehow it's gonna maybe a coll, I don't know, I'd be interested. Hopefully by the time we have to look at it, there's one we can go look at and talk to somebody.
I, I will ask, I'm sure there is a place we could go and look.
Just sometimes they, we might be putting it on more of a, a test than they did.
Yeah, no, I, there are.
Cause they're definitely gonna have to be cleaned at some point.
Yeah, they do have to be cleaned, yeah.
Thank you.
I'll find out if there, where there are some in operation, but they are, they are pretty new, um, I will, I know that for sure.
Balance sheet, financial statements, and due to do from is the last page. I did a twenty thousand dollar money market transfer today to the general fund to cover expenses. So over the past three weeks, um, on cash receipts, I have taken in one thousand fifty-four dollars and seventy cents in variety, um, fleet permits, um, certificate, certified copies, dog licenses, um, marriage license, vault fees, zoning permits. Uh, for delinquencies, Ron has handed in seven thousand one hundred thirty dollars and thirty-seven cents in the last three weeks.
That's pretty good.
Yeah.
Yeah, he's, he's kind of chipping away at that.
So, yeah, we're down to sixty-six thousand nine hundred eighty-two dollars and sixty-two cents.
In delinquencies?
Yep. And I just received another prepaid tonight. Questions, it's a lot to kind of.
Yeah, it's hard to really, you know, just kind of take in.
This is what I read just before I go to bed.
Right?
Nothing personal.
So I have good news, well, once you're viewing.
Okay, I'll, yeah, I'll save this.
We'll save it for later.
Give us some good news.
I have somebody who wants to do the mowing. Who has liability insurance.
Hey, that's on our agenda.
He viewed, he viewed all locations today. It's Derek Richardson from Hardwick, so he has liability coverage, I think he's gonna be doing it himself. He, um, so I re, retweet the contract, cause it was for a three year, so I put it at a year.
Yeah, we won't do that again, that was a mistake.
Um, I added the hall, around the hall and the median strip, making it five locations for the town, four locations for the town, excuse me, five cemeteries. And then cleanup, and, um, so he had bounced me a back, a description, and I had forgot, and I had left out, or it didn't say the town hall, around the town hall, and then that median strip, so I did bounce back, and, um, so he's gonna be coming in tomorrow, um, to do the paperwork.
Okay, great.
And get it on the roll.
Thank you very much.
So I'm super excited.
What was his total bid?
Six fifty, that's all locations, um, and that's where I need to tweak.
Okay, no, I got it, sounds like he's the only player, so.
Yeah, he wins.
He wins.
He wins.
Start mowing.
It's growing, you can hear the grass growing this weekend.
So this is what he bounced back, but of course, this was before I told him about the hall and that other strip.
So he'll do the cleanup, just the raking and?
Yes.
Okay, I was gonna ask you about that.
So I just wanted to make sure he saw all the locations, and he knew where the hall was and then the strip, so he'll be adding two more locations or around the hall and then that strip to $650.
Could you let Patty Garbeck know this? Do you have her?
Oh, yeah.
Cause I kinda lit a fire under her that the cemetery commission needed to find somebody. That sounds like.
So he's got something we can deal with then?
Yeah, yeah.
And that's in keeping with what we had before, just reasonably, I don't know what the prices were before.
Jamie's was $550 for the five cemeteries.
We've added a little more.
And then, and then it was 50 for the town hall, 25 for here, and so yeah, it's pretty consistent.
Okay, and then obviously the raking needed to be done, so.
The cleanups, yeah.
I saw there's where all the snow sat, it's a mess, so yeah, needs to be done.
So I'm excited.
Yeah, that's great.
I wrote to him today and he immediately popped down, checked out the locations, and then sealing the deal, cause I wanted to show something tonight to get this on the roll, cause we are way behind schedule.
Yeah.
Especially at the memorial. Yeah, yep. So once I get the contract signed, which I tweaked that, he's gonna revise his, and then I'll get the, you know, the business card, the certificate of insurance, get him to do an I-9 and the non-employee workers agreement signature, and I'm good for my audit.
Good. Do we have to vote to do that or is it cemetery commission thing?
It's, they usually.
They usually choose.
They usually choose and then we.
Okay.
So.
So what I'll do is forward everything to Patty and make sure that.
Just get it going, cause it's time.
Maybe I'll have Richard pop down while he's here doing paperwork tomorrow, and that way he can talk with him.
Cause I'm not sure how much Richard has been communicating with the rest of the cemetery commission that was part of the, but I know Patty has tried to contact everybody that is on the commission, and they were gonna meet and try to figure out, they were looking at somebody in Callis, I guess, who does the Callis mowing, but we, I think, problem solved, let's move forward.
Yeah.
And I think, you know, we, we basically, what we approve is the expenditure of the money, so we could do that tonight.
It gets signed off by Richard. But yeah.
What we had tried to do in the past, just to catch you up on, you know, we started putting out an RFP and getting bids when the, our procurement policy, well, the new procurement policy that we had, and the first year that we did it, the select board kind of did it, and you know, we kind of took it out of the hands of the cemetery commission and that sort of didn't feel right that they, you know, they should be involved.
And part of it was, it was then on the audits, the 1099s, the process that, that they have to, they have to provide liability insurance.
Correct.
Workers comp.
And all that stuff, in case they break something.
So it was, it was kind of us stepping in because then it followed back on me.
And that's a requirement for.
The LCT.
Right, our church doesn't cover, yeah.
So what we've done the last few years is that the bids come in, the cemetery commission looks at them, makes the decision, and then we approve the expenditure, the select board, so that's, and there's only one person to decide on, so there shouldn't be too much debate.
No.
So I think we can, I think we can approve.
Safely get it started.
Yeah, just so it's, it's on its way, yeah. So I would make a motion that we go with Derek Richardson to do both the cemetery mowing and the town mowing for the summer of 2019.
And the cleanup, right?
And the cleanup, right.
I'll say.
On your favor?
So at some point, once he signs the contract, I will come and get the board's signature.
Okay. While we're signing, could you sign the minutes? Well, I've stolen Grant's pen.
All right, go on.
Oh, yes.
We can do those today, Diana.
It was a freebie, but I love it.
I stole this from the office today. I mean, I borrowed it from you.
Right?
Careful what you say on camera.
That's okay, they know it's in my pocket. If you'll go with me tomorrow at work, they'll.
Awesome.
Great, Diana, thanks again for solving this problem.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
I was getting a little nervous getting closer to Memorial Weekend, but I didn't want people coming to visit and then it just being a mess.
So that's for Diana.
Alrighty, almost done. There's no questions.
Don't have any at the moment.
Perfect.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
So Diana, we're ready for a town clerk's report. And also cemetery and town mowing is done on June, we did it, yeah, so.
Let me catch up, yeah.
I don't, it's hard to tell on that clock, right?
Yeah, it's 20 after.
Yeah, where do you want it?
I was saying, you had the perfect behind, not too bad. I'll be quick.
We're in the ballpark.
You gave me five minutes anyway, so thank you for that.
Well, you've been very brief lately, so.
Yeah, right, no, really. I'm still trying to get caught up from the first two or three months of the year, getting ready for town meeting and all that, another two or three hours committed to recording, I should be all better. I've also, now I have to write minutes for the school district, but I hopefully it'll only be that one meeting, and then we'll be done with that. And I've also volunteered to do minutes and draft findings for the board of adjustment, cause a couple of years ago, Mary wanted to quit because there was no staff. So we got Jennifer to do it, and she did it for a year or so, and then she was gone.
Yeah.
So I said I would do that.
Is that something that Laura might be interested in?
I don't think she's, well, I mean, she looks good at doing minutes, but I'm not sure if she would know how to write the legal decisions, the findings of fact and things like that.
Right, that would be more zoning administrator, lister kind of thing.
Kind of experienced at that.
Okay, alright.
So on Thursday this week, Laura and I are both gonna spend two hours in the afternoon on training on a Skype thing for the new vital records law, which is coming into effect July 1st, and involves a lot of changes. From what I understand, it's gonna be a lot more difficult to give, give out birth certificates and things like that. It'll be, anyways, we're gonna hopefully learn about that on Thursday. Two hours, it'll be boring.
You have to bring in the babies, right?
Yeah, right. Yeah, we require people to bring in their dogs to get licensed. These, Washington County Mental Health contacted me, they wanna come here and do evening presentation, mental health crisis and services in Washington County. What do we have, what do we need? They did one in Waterbury a while ago. And all I really did was arrange for the town hall, I thought that would be a good place. They wanna do something probably June 13th.
Oh, so it's not coming to a select board, meaning it's more.
Right.
Kind of a town info.
Yeah, right.
So what's the date again?
They asked for June 13th if they can get the people that they want for their panel, otherwise their, their alternative date was June 6th. I haven't heard a confirmation. I had Robin put them both on her calendar, pencil them in on her calendar.
Now, when you said that, it just reminded me, I'm trying to think of the woman's name and the organization that's based in Hardwick that does some conflict resolution and.
That's right, she wanted to come.
She wanted to come and meet with us, so I'm just gonna, and I told her to wait until, but I haven't gotten back to her now. I think we could deal with her now.
Carol Plant.
Carol Plant, thank you very much. So I will contact her. The school stuff is sort of almost behind us.
You guys missed the meeting last week, the budget meeting, like the last one where.
Conflict.
Yeah, well, something.
I was in Montclair at a dispatch meeting, it was way worse.
I'm sure. Well, 32 people showed up to vote on the budget that will probably have a shelf life of two weeks.
Two weeks, right.
And then we'll vote again on the 28th, and that'll be an all-day session at the town hall.
That's an Australian ballot.
There is a information meeting though.
That's the 21st.
Yeah.
Yeah, the 21st.
At the Hardwick Gym, at, I don't know what time, 6 o'clock, I'm sorry.
So yeah, the people, the one meeting that we had in Hard, in Hardwick where the school board had sent out a individual mailing to everybody on their checklist, a lot of people from Hardwick showed up, and that was the night when they voted to have Australian ballot for the budget and Australian ballot for the elections in the future, so that'll be different. Won't have much to talk about. Much chance to discuss this. The last people, well, you know, nobody goes to the Hazen meeting. When we used to have Australian ballots for the Hazen vote, we'd have it here and we might get 40 people. It's the most, you know, the biggest part of our budget, and people just felt totally disengaged, and I think it's probably gonna be the same way now with the, with the elementary union, because it's, we're going from $1 million budget to a $7, $7 million budget.
What could go wrong, right? What could go wrong?
Right. You ask questions and then, anyways.
I think everybody's probably just seen that one.
Okay, so any questions on town clerk business?
Nope.
Okay. So moving on, cause the old Woodbury store project. Not much to report there. I emailed Lauren last week, cause I, as far as I know, we've got everything. It's been like three weeks since we submitted the last piece of information. And.
Has she submitted it to FEMA? You haven't heard?
Haven't heard back.
Okay, alright.
Yeah. So.
I see they were surveying, did they finish that survey?
Oh God, yeah, that survey has been so long and so difficult. So what I was gonna say to you is that if you have to do a survey, you should hire them because.
Yeah, that's why, I wanna know where they drove their pins, cause.
Yeah, but because they researched that whole quarter.
Cause I don't think the lines on the tax map are right.
Oh, probably not.
So I was hoping they would help with that, and we may end up having to hire them.
Yeah, so that would make sense because she's, yeah.
Cause I know they had to measure from the one line on our side all the way across.
They've done one, well.
Did they drive pins, did you know, where they thought?
I don't know.
I haven't seen them yet, I was gonna go look at them, but, cause I know there's flags in the middle of our lawn, but I don't think those are the pins.
No. No, I noticed a flag over behind the.
The fires next to the town hall.
Yeah.
There's flags across the lawn, and I'm like, oh, that isn't the line, but there must be.
There's no line there, but somehow.
I don't know if they, how they, I don't know.
Anyway.
I think that's surveying.
Yeah, it's complicated.
It looks like they measured across, cause the fireside, that has pins, real, real property might have pins, so I'm guessing they had to work their way across. Guessing.
Yeah, they were having trouble with Brandy's lot.
Yeah, cause all those are just a bunch in there.
So, so the title search is done, I've just asked the attorney, our attorney, you know, what, who prepares the closing documents? Is it our attorney or the seller's attorney? And he said that some of it should need to be prepared by the seller's attorney, and then she has to do something, and then at the last minute they have to update the title, like anything's been exchanged. But they have to do that anyways, and so, we got a lot of things ready to go as soon as we get that letter.
Well, hopefully we'll find out that sometime soon that FEMA has it or not.
Right. Yeah. The only news, I mean, the only good thing that she said at one point was that FEMA was anxious to get this off their list because it's one of their last projects from IRE money.
Get off their dead horse and get a hold of it.
Yeah, really, yeah.
There the holdup.
I'll tell, no, I won't.
Yeah, just tell them, tell Paul so, that'll help.
So actually, while you're here, Diana, the next thing on the agenda, Ron mentioned to me that the listers have a new extension date.
It's in your.
It's in the, in your folder out there. So apparently there've been some new conditions for current, land is in current use, so the listers have, kinda have to redo those different parcels. They have to come up for, like some kind of per parcel, this is my understanding from.
So we gotta approve an extension so they have time to do it?
Exactly, yeah.
Every year they need an extension, or sometimes two extensions, but this year, they got a new lister and all this current use stuff, I don't understand what it is, but it's making Ron very frustrated.
Yeah, so I'll just read what Ron wrote here.
I'm swamped by this.
Pursuant to the provisions of 32 VSA, section 4342, we are asking the Woodbury Select Board on property and property evaluation and review to approve an extension of time to complete 2019 town of Woodbury listed work. This request is needed owing to new CU regulations, many new buildings and additions, and especially the complete revalue of the Cahagan property with eight buildings and 2,680 feet of shore frontage. We have made numerous calls to set up appointments with little or no response to date. We have property owners on lakefronts that will not be here until July 4th. We would like to request an extension for completing our work to July 4th, 2019. It is likely that we will need another extension beyond the July 4th date, but we can only get approval for 30 days at a time. This will help to get us along the path to completing required work.
How is July 4th from now 30 days?
When's the actual deadline? It's probably 30 days, probably June 4th, right?
No, it's probably the end of July is when they usually try to get it done, and that's, and that triggers you guys doing your budget for the tax.
He's actually saying, what Ron said, we would like to request an extension for completing our work. It is likely that we'll, that we'll, they'll need another, okay, I see you, yeah. Yeah, I don't know how they get 30 days from now, but we should probably.
Just sign it.
Sign it and date it, or?
If you did it wrong, you know.
I'm gonna bore your pen, cause the only thing I have is a red pen.
Just write in there, not like for Brandy's task building.
Okay, alright.
Oh yeah, really, hurry up for my.
I just started to write that, man.
It's in the fine print, you can't really read it.
Good thing there's, I'm gonna bore your pen. Good thing there's an N and part of M, so.
This thing might have, probably better date.
Probably did, yeah. Brian, if you could put a dig in there for us.
What's the date?
May 13th.
2019?
Okay, I'll see if this gets where it's going. I can just put it up there for you. Okay.
Okay, thank you. So the next thing on our list is, there's a request from the auditors, and I have a feeling at this point that it will be Skip, Brandy, Susan Martin, and Jane Noel Loren Dow would all like to attend the VSA T training in government accounting and auditing symposium that they'll be having. It's like $60 a pop plus.
When is it?
Sometime in June.
Oh, I saw one, is that the one on June 5th?
Could be, yeah. Yeah, I don't know the date actually, it's coming up, but.
Yeah, fine. Do we have to vote on it? Or just do it?
Let's, I mean.
Yeah, just do it.
Yeah, let's just do it, yeah. We don't have to vote on it, yeah. They just wanted to, usually the, somebody is doing this, gets permission from the select board, but it's for the town's benefit, so. Good, so that's, that's that, and we've already done the cemetery and town mowing, so we're kind of, we're in the closing stretches here, which is nice. It's 7:30, we're actually ahead of schedule.
Nice.
So Woodbury Fire Station project update?
Okay. About three weeks, three and a half weeks ago, we had a meeting, we were there for.
Part of it, yeah.
So we ended up hiring the architect, or the, the committee picked the architect, the fire department had to hire them and pay for, we raised the money to do the initial planning, so goodness, what's his name again? I've forgotten.
Patrick.
Patrick Kane.
Kane, yeah.
And there's a fellow, he works with at a Callis, so they have the ones that were selected by the committee. And so what, we've approved the money at our last meeting to move forward with the preliminary design to get to where we could have a vote on, to establish how we're gonna pay and who's gonna pay and all those type of questions. So he's been hired, I think, I don't know what the, there's a meeting coming up, but I didn't hear the date yet. And I guess the committee kind of felt like, let the fire department guys meet with this guy to go measure and kind of give him our. and kind of give him our particulars and then he'll have something in the next thirty days or less to bring to the.
The committee will.
The committee back to look at it and review. We did discuss costs with this, cause one of the design criteria was designing toward a cost. So I said, well, what kind of costs is everyone here comfortable with? And the numbers that was kind of thrown at somewhere between seven hundred and fifty thousand and a million dollars. If we'd want to stay under that, that was kind of the consensus of the group. So that was our marching order.
And the committee, just for the public record, the committee is made up of members of Callis, select board member and some other knowledgeable people and from Woodbury, select board member and our Norman Etkin, resident, who's very knowledgeable. Peter Pelz has been involved also.
Robin was there.
And Robin Durkey. So and actually Jane Noel.
Noel's been there before, yeah.
So we have different people from Woodbury kind of sitting in on these meetings too.
Now, just also the project we're moving forward with is what was proposed by that study.
Right, the village plan study, yeah.
The proposal would be building a, building to have all the fire equipment and dispatch office, washing machines and the Aaronson lot. And then the, and the fire station would be renovated to a meeting room and kitchen and office space. We'll be probably retaining the annex for storage. So that's what we're moving forward with. So that's the what, the how what it's gonna look like, that's what we're supposed to be working on now. And then hopefully, hoping, I don't know how long he's gonna take, but hopefully within a month, we'll have a. The timeframe everybody's working in is that we would try to have something to vote on by next spring at town meeting day. That was kind of the timeframe that was laid out, so whether we get there or not will be.
So in the future, the trucks will be washed over on the Aaronson project?
Aaronson project, yeah, that, the goal would be to get the fire trucks out of that building and all of the truck. So you might end up with the, look, you know, thinking this through, the bolt might be still stored in the annex. And we're talking about buying a small trailer to carry some like brush fire equipment and things we don't need on the trucks on. So that might end up over there, so that's kind of, kind of where we're working toward. It seems workable, not the most ideal setup, but I think it gets the cost number into where it's believable and manageable. And to the village, those are kind of the two things that we, marching orders we were working with.
That's true, yeah.
So here we are. So stay tuned, what that's exactly going, there's some challenges with zoning, I think we're gonna have to deal with and stuff like that, so.
But zoning, there's setbacks and stuff?
Setbacks could be an issue and lot coverage could be an issue. So those are two things that were identified already. Act two fifty, I think we're still gonna get an exemption like we did on the other lot. I just have to, you have to work through the process. We've already looked at the SEPTIC and all those other things, so pretty much all that stuff is kind of known. Quanial, the internet really knows the zoning and I talked to Bob Martin about we could, once we know the kind of guidelines and the committee's happy, he said we could apply for a zoning permit this summer or in the fall and then get to the zoning Board of Adjustment. Cause we really don't want to move forward if they're not gonna let us do. We don't know if those are gonna be a need, I'm pretty sure lot coverage will, but cause I think the maximum lot coverage is ten percent. And if we built the, say a five thousand square foot building, there are gonna be coverage at fifteen percent or something. But the setbacks might be an issue because Route fourteen's seventy-five feet, not sixty. So again, I don't know if that's gonna be an issue yet, that's where this design has to happen. And then we can decide if we can squeeze it out of there or not.
Tight squeeze?
Well, yeah, all your lots are tiny, so. But when we start going to a much bigger lot, the price goes. Stay tuned, cause where we're at. And it hasn't been a lot of movement in three weeks and we've kind of had to wait to get the approval from us at our meeting for the funding and then now we've got a meeting, but I don't know what day it is, it's supposed, coming soon.
For the architect.
To meet, so we can walk through, he can measure all the stuff. We've already got a digitized site plan that we paid for for the Aaronson site, so he can, my guy can transfer that to him, but then he's got to measure the existing buildings so he can do a plan for it. We'll give him the space requirements and then he's got to cram it in there. That's his job.
Try and make it fit, huh?
Make it fit.
Yeah, it'll be tight.
Good luck, yeah.
Gonna be a tight squeeze, but I think it's, can be managed.
So I was gonna try to get ahold of Paul Council to get just kind of an update on what happened on Green Up Day, but I wasn't able to do that, so.
He did come in today and talk to.
Yeah, I know, he brought.
Saw lots of trash disappear.
Yeah, yeah, I think it was pretty much the usual, you know. Well, I was out on the roads quite a bit, so I don't really, wasn't really aware what was happening at the school, but the truck was pretty well filled and we collected quite a few roadside tires.
Forty-seven.
Forty-seven.
Wow, two weeks out.
That seemed like a lot.
Yeah, there weren't, there weren't any huge drops of tires, but there were different spots. We're like seven along Dog Pond Road and at the end of Cava Road, there was a pile of six, so you know, just different smaller piles like that upon Nichols Pond Road.
I was like, people planned for it.
Yeah.
Green Up Day, let's take these, drop them off.
Good strategy, you know. So, but yeah, so it was a good day and Elizabeth Stratton and the friends of the Woodbury Elementary School, they had a thing for the children, like they've done the last couple of years. Different parents kind of came and over, went out with the, with the kids to do stuff, so. And then next on the list, just with a follow-up with the health officer, right at the moment, I am the default health officer.
You've got a BGAU.
I got a official certificate in the mail with a book and everything for three years. But Diana did send out an ad.
Yeah, I didn't put it out until today.
Okay, it's just gone out. Poor health officer, I haven't checked in with, you know, neighboring towns to see.
Well, I've got a meeting with the Hardwick Town Manager.
Okay.
Hopefully I'll get to call him next, this week, but I don't know if I will, I can talk to him about.
Okay, I know Diana has.
They already tried to talk him into it.
No, no, I was wondering about sharing a health officer with Hardwick.
Yeah, Richard Rofco had been a health officer out there for years and years and Sean is now the assistant health officer.
Yeah, so I'm just gonna talk to him and see.
Can't hurt to bring it up.
Yeah, you know, he lives in town, maybe there while in the work, it might be our best approach. Cause you don't, you don't really love the job.
Well, I don't, I mean, I don't know anything about it.
I don't want the job, I can assure you.
I have plenty of other things to do.
And then he would at least be a resource.
I'm gonna talk to him, when I talk to him, I got another thing, the project for them, but I was gonna raise that issue with him and say, hey, would this be a consideration? If so, what would it look like? And if I get anything, I'll bring it back.
And I'll contact either the Callis Select Board Chair or the Town Clerk and see if that's a possibility. Just have him down there. And I'll, maybe the booklet that they send will be mine, bedtime reading. We'll see, but I think, you know, if something came up, I think we could count on Sean and your experience to at least get us, get us through the whatever needs to be done.
Yeah, we are board of health as a group, so.
Stuck with it anyway.
They're stuck anyway, so.
And that's pretty much it on my list. Anything else that?
Next meeting, please.
Yes, thank you, that should have been on my list. That's Memorial Day, so what do we want to do about that? We could, let's pick an alternative date, thank you Laura, that wasn't my thinking, different times.
Is that Wednesday?
I could meet on Wednesday that week.
So that would be the twenty, twenty-ninth? Does that work for you, Brian?
Yeah, twenty-ninth though.
Call it now or forever be quiet?
Let's, let's call it May twenty-ninth.
Thank you for bringing that up, I would have been a cranky boy.
Let's see, am I, I'm not working in Burlington. Okay, I think I'm good too.
Good, you're good there.
My schedule's filling up really fast for May and June.
I was working in Burlington, I could get here just in time, but I'd rather not work all day in Burlington and get here just in time to select one.
Race home for this, yeah.
We had a, one more thing to mention, I have had a call and I don't think she's been able to follow up because the woman who called couldn't, works on Monday nights.
Oh, okay.
But she lives at the end of Ainsworth Road and she was complaining about that off of that house that's been sort of abandoned.
She complaining about the house or the trees in the road?
The house. In fact, the trees are, the trees were being.
Cleaned up today.
Cleaned up today.
I got a call on the tree that fell into the road, I know that you mentioned, but that's be okay.
Anyways, I just wondered whether maybe the dangerous buildings officer could.
Take a look, it is.
Take a look at that, cause it is a mess and there's garbage there from years ago and and we, you said that we still have that ordinance in place. And we still have a dangerous building officer, so if it's not really a health, a health officer thing, maybe it could be a dangerous buildings. And maybe a letter from the town to that bank that is dealing around with foreclosing could.
Which takes forever.
Have some, yeah, maybe.
So it's not owned by the bank yet?
I don't know. It's been years since it's been abandoned, so.
Do we have a contact person, do the listers have a?
We have a, the place where we send the mail, the tax bill.
Okay.
That's it.
And is that to a bank or to a person or?
It's a bank or a mortgage, some kind of a company.
And they pay the taxes, isn't it?
Right, yeah. And they're moving slowly through the enforcement process.
Oh, really?
I mean, to the foreclosure process.
It takes forever, yeah.
It does, it takes forever and then they'll have a, finally they'll have an auction and nobody will pay their price and then they'll list it and yeah, it's.
Probably won't go to tax sale, but eventually someone will call and they'll just buy it from the bank somehow for.
It's not even worth buying, it's not.
Cause you're gonna have to pay to haul the building away.
Right.
I mean, we could have, can look at it, but you know, and looking at the building, it doesn't look, I mean, the garage roof is caved in, but that's because the tree fell on it.
But maybe that's a response.
That's why we cut the trees.
But maybe that's a response we want to have, we've had a complaint, we should have our building officer look at it and send us a letter and we can send it to the bank and we've done what we're supposed to do.
You mean, it's not, there's not gonna be anyone to complain and say, this is not dangerous, cause nobody cares.
Right, there's nobody nearby that it would fall on. But a letter.
Anyways, just think about it.
No, a letter might help, I guess it's doing something about it anyway, so. So do you think it would be best to have Kim look at it and just write up a report and then the select board could send a letter along with the report? Do you think that would be the way to go on that or?
I think it would be good to have Kim look at it first and then to decide whether or not to have some kind of order written, I don't know if he's ever done that in the past or if.
It's probably what we should do, just have Kim look at it and walk back to us.
Yeah, okay.
Do you want me to?
All the time it works.
My department would be a good place to burn something.
We can't burn buildings, it's very difficult.
Yeah, sure, if you want to call Kim, thank you for doing that.
It's very tough to do now. About ninety percent of it, we just tell them it's not.
Wow.
Cause you gotta remove all the siding, all the carpets, all the roofing, all the.
Anything that might be toxic.
You gotta do asbestos testing, any trash, any stuff that come out. So by the time someone's done all that, they're saying, well, they much left them, I'll just pay the other ten grand and get it thrown out. We're gonna be running out, we ultimately end up tearing our building down, it's like, it seems like it's burning, we can't really do it.
Can't do it.
Well, it's, it's a long process, it's not a simple process. And you gotta have a bona fide training session afterwards.
Out behind Joel Sargent's.
Oh, I've seen it.
Huge brush pile with a bunch of trash in there.
Yep, it's been photographed, if he burns it, I will call the A and R on him and Ronnie Langivan told me about it, so I am aware of it. I took some pictures of it, so if it goes, it's.
It goes up, yeah. I see it today and I'll.
Cause a lot of times, we have our ordinance, but the bigger, the bigger hammer is if I call air quality on him.
Right.
Which I will do.
Send somebody out.
Cause I just talked to Burna Girl in Wolka and he just got a huge fine from a guy, it was a ten or fifteen thousand dollar fine from the guy that burned his house. He put the, he's got a permit to burn a brush pile and he piled it on the porch and lit the house on fire.
Oh my God.
Burnt the house down and then said it was an accident and the state said, okay, no problem.
Don't worry about that.
Here's your fine, ten thousand over there. So that's what I plan to do too, when I get, I am not really pushing the minor little, but that's an egregious violation, I would definitely go after it.
And the state has much better enforcement.
They have, yeah.
I mean, we have really nothing.
Nothing, we've got a ticket process, but it's pretty cumbersome, so.
And if they ignore the ticket, what do we do next?
You don't go out and put out fires?
We do, but the last one turned kind of, they've gotten kind of violent is some of these folks where it's like, I'm gonna have to carry a gun and I don't really want to have to do that. The last one we went to was up at our Bliss Road. Seen they were, the folks from across the street were hauling trash up there and burning it. Got a little hairy up there that day and the state police didn't come and so having the guys be careful, cause they've gotten down in behind Katons before where it came real close to turning violent.
Yeah, I remember that incident.
Yeah, and we're not really armed, nor do I really want.
No, you shouldn't.
If guys are concealed carry, that's their business, but it's like the fire department, enough. I'm just advocating if there's tension, then you need to just leave and call state police and if they don't come, there's nothing we can do except document it and I don't want to see anybody getting shot over a pile of crap burning. That's what it's escalated to in some areas, the last couple have been a little stressful.
So if there's nothing else, I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
Favor?
Alright.